Hello, welcome to the August 24th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting for the City of Malden. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Deerhog, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioner Foreman?
Present.
Commissioner Pagliolunga?
Present.
Commissioner Sowfield?
Present.
Commissioner Ong?
Present.
And Commissioner Barefoot?
Present.
Commissioner Woolard?
Present.
Our Chairman, Mr. Paulson?
Present.
And let me add that our Commissioner Woolard has got a prior engagement scheduled for a little later tonight, so she will be anticipating jumping off here around 6:45.
Thank you. Before we get started, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held to consider the following agenda items. We're going to read and approve the minutes from the July Planning Commission Meeting. We're going to review a preliminary plat for Adams Glen subdivision. And we're going to review text amendments for zoning ordinance for thrift stores. If you're here for any item not listed on that agenda, we will not be able to discuss that during our meeting tonight, but you're welcome to talk to one of us after the meeting, or to contact one of the city staff members during regular business hours. Tonight, we'll do our best to maintain professionalism and courtesy throughout the meeting, and we ask all of you to do the same. We kindly ask that everyone here refrain from talking, clapping, or making a disturbance throughout the meeting. There'll be time provided for all, everyone from the public to speak during each item on the agenda. Also, please, phones on vibrate. So we're going to begin with a review from the July Planning Commission Meeting of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July, like meeting.
I have a motion from Commissioner Pagliolunga to approve the July Planning Commission Meeting of a meeting minutes. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
I have a second. Any last minute discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and go and call for a vote. Mr. Deerhog, since we have a remote commissioner, will you help us with a roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Foreman?
Aye.
Commissioner Pagliolunga?
Aye.
Commissioner Sowfield?
Aye.
Commissioner Ong?
Aye.
Commissioner Barefoot?
Aye.
Commissioner Woolard?
Aye.
And our Chairman, Commissioner Paulson?
Aye.
That passes by about a seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is a review for the preliminary plat for Adams Glen subdivision. We're going to begin with an introduction to this item from staff. After that introduction, we'll ask any members of the commission if they need to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte communication regarding this item. After this, the applicant will be given an opportunity to comment on the application if they need to. Following the applicant's comments, we'll open the floor to public comments. Members of the public who wish to comment will be granted up to three minutes to speak. And we're going to try to keep that consistent tonight. You'll only be allowed to speak once. We do not permit speakers to concede time to other speakers. If someone has already said something that you'd planned to say, we ask that you simply state that you agree with the previous comment instead of saying it again. Please be respectful of each person who speaks and refrain from talking, clapping, or making disturbance while they're speaking. After everyone has had a chance to speak, we're going to close the floor to public comment. We'll provide the applicant an opportunity to provide any final comments if they need to. After this, we'll get our recommendation from staff. Mr. Deerhog, will you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city's received a preliminary plat application for the Adams Glen subdivision. The applicant's proposing to develop and subdivide this tract as a cluster development, tallying 273 detached, single-family homes on this 101-acre tract of land. This represents a density of 2.7 units per acre. On the map you'll, that's stored on the display right now, you'll see where this is located along Ashmore Bridge Road, just near the intersection of Fowler Circle and Ashmore Bridge Road between there and the Reedy River. The tract was annexed by the city with a zoning designation of R-15, low-density residential. This tract is currently undeveloped. I've shown on the display the proposed layout. Again, this is a cluster development being proposed, meaning that the homes are generally grouped together in order to preserve extra open space. This drawing right here just shows their street tree layout, where they'll be planting street trees at, both along Ashmore Bridge Road and along their internal streets that they will develop. And this last drawing shows their tree save areas where they'll be preserving trees. You'll see, maybe hard to see on this drawing because of the color, but the area along the northern part of the track that runs along the creek will be the majority of their tree area, stretching the span from east to west. And then down at the lower corner of the tract where it abuts Ashmore Bridge Road, as well as the Braymore subdivision, near the Braymore subdivision entrance is an additional tree save area. And the zoning that's, or the development that's proposed right now meets the requirements of the zoning district. The allowed density in the R-15 zoning district is 2.9 units per acre, and this one comes in under that at 2.7 units per acre. The minimum amount of open space that's required is 30%, and for this development, they have proposed 44%. I'll be glad to go through the staff findings at that point of this item.
Thank you. Before we continue, I'll ask the commission, do any of the commissioners have any conflict of interest or ex parte communication regarding this item they'd like to disclose? Hearing none. Does the applicant wish to add any comments at this time? I'm going to open the floor for public comments regarding this item. I have a list of people here who wanted to speak. I'll ask for you to come up at that time. Just come up to the microphone there. Give us your name and address, and share your comment. Norman Bun?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Norman Bun. My address is 221 Yorke's Well Lane, which is in Braymore subdivision, which adjoins the planned development. I'll try to keep my comments brief. Thankfully, I'll bullet point them, and I'll be happy to share them with the commission following. I am concerned, obviously, with the planned development and the density, especially as shown here, and how it will impact our subdivision. There are three creeks currently that provide rainwater runoff to the Reedy River. One of these creeks runs along the back property lines of three other homes in Braymore. The other creek runs along the side and rear of six other homes in Braymore. If the storm water is not properly managed, I do see detention ponds planned. What are the plans to mitigate these issues otherwise? In addition, this area is prolific with wildlife. We have deer, wild turkeys, beavers, groundhogs, foxes, raccoons, whatever, that are currently wandering through our lots every day. With this development, I'm not sure where the wildlife gets to go. If you look at the area around here, this is primarily very low density. There's R-5 on all sides of this lot. This is the only R-15 in the area. Okay? So I'm curious what the City of Malden is doing in general to address the safety of the wildlife preservation of in our area. I'm concerned about the lack of what appears to be buffer zones, especially at close to the entrance of Braymore. Between these houses that are planned, some of my neighbors will have houses right up to their backyards, which is not conducive to what we have there now. In the last three years, Malden's approved the development of hundreds of homes along Ashmore Bridge Road, especially beyond the Reedy River. There's no plan been released for the improvement of the road or any additional level of traffic control. Winding is now almost impossible with existing and new development of houses backing up to the current right-of-way. Traffic enforcement is almost nonexistent with traffic on the Reedy River to well beyond Fowler Circle, or often than not being 10 miles an hour or higher than the posted speed limit. Ashmore Bridge is quickly becoming a huge traffic headache during the mornings and evenings, and the displacement of the wildlife and the potential danger to them by the traffic is unconscionable. I was going to read to you a lyric from Big Yellow Taxi about, take paradise and put up a parking lot. But I will, I think you all know the lyrics. I know them well. There's just too much development going on Braymore in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bun. Apologize in advance, John Kowalczuk?
Good evening, John. My name is John Kowalczuk. I'm also a resident of the Braymore development. I reside at Two Morley Way. Certainly, I'd like to echo Norman's concerns. We have seen a dramatic increase in especially the deer population on our property as they've been displaced by other developments that are already taking place along and adjacent to Ashmore Bridge Road. What is concerning to me, and I just find it unbelievable, is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, there is no existing plan for Ashmore Bridge Road to accommodate not only this proposed development, but the developments that are under construction. And I ask you, is that correct?
We will address your question after the public comment section. Just for clarification, you said there's no plan with regard to wildlife displacement? Is that what you're asking?
What I'm asking more specifically on the plan is for the increase of traffic on Ashmore Bridge Road, A, for the existing developments that are being constructed. There are hundreds and hundreds of homes being constructed. You're constructing now, proposing another 270-some odd homes. That's going to put hundreds more cars trying to intersect onto Ashmore Bridge Road during rush hour traffic. When I leave work at 7:00 a.m., making a left turn onto Ashmore Bridge Road is already a challenge. There have been several accidents there, and I'm hoping that a plan is put in place before more serious accidents occur. My other concern is, with all this traffic funneling onto Ashmore Bridge Road, where does it go from there? I cut through Fowler now in the morning. The traffic light on Fowler has cars backed up, blocking some of the developments. And again, we're adding hundreds more cars. On Malden Road, we have a lot of development going on, and the traffic has been steadily increasing on there. I see there's new traffic lights going up, which is going to back up traffic even more. So again, I think, gentlemen, we need a comprehensive traffic analysis and a study done on this whole entire area. And I respectfully suggest that you put a moratorium on any more building until that plan is developed and implemented. With that, I thank you, gentlemen, and have a good evening.
Thank you. James Lowe?
James Lowe, 2 Yorke's Well Lane. And it's different from John and Norman. We backed directly up to this property. So we got a very large concern about that. One thing we're concerned about is the amount of watershed. We're already bombarded with that coming off that big ridge now. Having to give you right, flood right through our property. The other thing, just to kind of, a little bit more into the traffic situation, I leave normally about 5:30, 4:00 to 6:00, go to the gym. Get passed numerous mornings by traffic on the double yellow line, coming into double curves. Just, you know, a real concern already for that. And basically, when I had to say John and Norman have really covered it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only name I have left is the applicant, unless there's someone else here who'd like to speak.
My name is Dan Martin, and I live on Yorke's Well Lane, as well as these gentlemen. I'm going to echo the same concerns, gentlemen. I've lived, I'm a resident, 20 years, three years. Moved to Braymore one year ago. And the traffic increase in Ashmore Bridge is, you know, residents here as well. The concerns I have as far as traffic is, safety, said, I personally have been passed, speed limit is 35. There's no enforcement, no enforcement. I have personally called Malden Police Department. I have talked to an officer, asked if they would patrol the road more. You never see them. Speed limit there is 35 posted, they're running 50. It concludes the trucks going through Bonnie Bray construction site. John, it's going to take one instant if someone does pull out and they're at the speed limit. Fully different topic. So I do think for, the first tree is taken out, first bulldozer is brought in, traffic needs to be corrected. If you're turning left on Ashmore Bridge Road now, there in front of CVS and QT, any time of day, that's on your end of a normal workday, you're going to, well, just try it, and you'll see what we're talking about. Building 260 homes here, 750 to 800 in Bonnie Bray. Each home has at least one, possibly two cars in addition to what's already on Ashmore Bridge. It's just an unsafe road. The road is broken up. Don't know, maybe you can answer, maybe there is some plan to, to make some improvements on that. As far as the subdivision is proposed here, I see that it literally does come right up to the back doors of some of these homes. Hoping to see some type of buffer. And I noticed, just watching some of the other subdivisions being built more recently in Malden over the last few years, very close by here, literally, there was no control. The developers cleaned all the way back up. Right here at side tractor supply. And they're just clear cutting, taking every piece of the tree out of there, all the way up as far as they can get. Hoping to see a little more of a buffer between this subdivision, looking at this plan here. It's not there. So I'm really disappointed. And again, I'm a resident for 23 years. Very disappointed to see that this would even be considered. That's it.
Thank you. Before I invite the applicant to come up again, any more comments from the public? Okay. I'm going to close the floor to public comment at this time. Does the applicant wish to provide any final comments?
My name is Paul Harrison. Address is 718 Lounce Hill Road, Greenville, South Carolina 29607. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. We're the civil engineers for the project. We were responsible for the annexation and zoning of this property into the City of Malden. As David mentioned, it would be an R-15 cluster development. We're proposing 273, single-family detached lots, the density around 2.7 units per acre. The R-15 technically would allow 2.9 units per acre. And we've been above and beyond on the open space provided as well. We are, we did have a traffic study done by Remy Kemp. We are proposing pretty extensive traffic improvements along Ashmore Bridge Road, mainly at the intersection of Orient Drive and the intersection of Ranch Road, which are where both of our interest points will be along Ashmore Bridge Road. And to speak a little bit about the buffer, we are, we do have a 25-foot external setback from the property line. In some cases, we are close to that line along the Braymore subdivision. But in other areas, like lots 205, 206, 207, that buffer along that area is more like, is more like 65 to 75 feet. We do get a little close with lots 261 through 258. Those are close, but it's still, we're maintaining the required 25-foot at that exterior setback. So with that being said, I would be glad to answer any questions that the planning commission may have. We have had extensive meetings with DOT concerning our traffic study, concerning the roadway improvements, concerning the making sure we capture the other developments in the area that are not already built. Not just already built, but the ones under construction as well. So, that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I can. So, so the issue is you're traveling south along Ashmore Bridge Road. We're designating a right-turn lane into our development, a left-turn lane onto Orient Drive that's not currently there. Just coming on south, I'm going to just work my way south, and then I'll work back up north. So as you work your way south, we're proposing a left-turn lane onto Ranch Road. And then as you circle back and drive north, we would propose left-turn lane into our southernmost access point, and then a left-turn lane into our northernmost access point. So full-on left-turn lanes at both of those intersections, not only just into our subdivision, but also onto the existing roads for those existing subdivisions across the street. And then the addition of the right-turn lane at the northern driveway, because we feel like the majority of our traffic coming from that direction is going to turn into that first drive.
Your traffic study, looks like that was prepared by Remy Kemp. Remy Kemp, they mentioned Ashmore Bridge and Orient Drive, I guess the lower picture here on the screen. Migrate to the signal at Ranch Road if implemented. Is there any discussion about doing that at this, at this time?
There, there have been some discussions about that with DOT. I actually had a meeting with them yesterday. There is a proposed development that's going in along Ranch Road, and that development size has fluctuated since it was originally approved. Of course.
Legacy pines gone, of course.
Legacy pines, my bad. So they were originally going to develop the entire property. And we captured that original density from that. There have been discussions about the DOT on that original plan, which was like, don't hold me to it, but I think it was like 650 lots in legacy pines. There was some discussion about a traffic light. We did the signal warrant, and based on their new site plan that is before Greenville County Planning Commission today, is a much lower density. And DOT said, well, we're, we're not, we can't require you, if the signal warrant does not need a signal, requiring you to put in a signal, then we can't require you, and we're not going to require you to put that in. But we will continue to analyze that. And DOT said, you know, if it hits a point five years and down the road, then DOT would put the signal in at Ranch Road.
Is Ranch Road a state road?
It's a county road.
It's county, okay.
It's Greenville County Road. And the reason the state, they're aware of the neighborhood, because I had to capture it in our traffic impact study, but they don't have to go to the state for any encroachment permits since they tie direct to a county road.
Thank you.
Those conversations are going to continue. And I can tell you that when we submit for our encroachment permits for our driveway accesses, if, if whatever requirements are required by DOT, we're going to have to implement those requirements in order to get our driveway actions to Ashmore Bridge, because they're going to govern Ashmore Bridge.
Mr. Harrison? The, there's a comment in here, on the markup summary about, and looking at the northwest corner, about how the topography of that northwest corner drains away from the proposed homes, but there's no storm water management in that upper corner. Is there any plans to amend that to? Or is everything going to be to go to that, that larger pond there, a little bit more to the west?
Northwest corner?
So I guess we're the more northern, northern corner, just above that storm water management pond and the open space. Looking at the topography of the subdivision, a lot of that, that curve, was it Scarlet Lane, I think, or something like that? It, a lot of that falls off the back of those lots, but there's no, there's nothing behind that as far as storm water management for that corner.
Our anticipated design in the future is to capture that with storm drainage. Make sure that all of those lots are draining back around to that storm water, to the larger storm water management pond. Behind lots 140 and through 133. So our intention is to pick all of that up, and we won't have any water discharge in there. In the event that we did, I mean, we would have to treat that, have to make, ensure that we treat that storm water before it runs off of our site.
Any additional discussion from the commission for the applicant? Thank you. Mr. Deerhog, will you please provide the recommendation as staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me share with you some of the observations about. So let me share with you some of the observations about this project. The, as far as property values go, the builder will be D.R. Horton. The homes in this project are projected to sell at an average in the mid-high 300s, 300,000s. This range will be above the average price of home sales in the adjacent communities, including Maple Grove, The Grove, and Deer Ridge, except for Braymore, which is a high-end community that was developed by D.R. Horton. And, and you can see in, in the chart I gave you, their, their sales have been more in the 400 to 600,000 range and higher. The project doesn't entail a fair amount of tree preservation. There's a large 25-acre tract or a tree preservation area along the northern portion of the property. This will help to accommodate some of the wildlife that's been displaced. The area of the project also coincides with some flood plains. There's also a small one-acre tree preservation area along the southwest corner of the property, adjacent to Ashmore Bridge Road. There are some wetlands located on this tract, but they do not appear to interfere with any of the proposed lots or the development for this project. The development will include two separate entrances along Ashmore Bridge Road, as we've already kind of talked a little bit about. And there will be a third hidden emergency vehicle access, also at Ashmore Bridge Road. There was some discussion about the number of access points involving the fire marshal, but this plan here seems to satisfy the requirements. One of the issues they were running into is, in some cases, we would require a third entrance, a full entrance, but the DOT has indicated that that would not be something they would allow. And, and so this modified plan seems to satisfy all the parties around. Mr. Harrison did mention and talk about the traffic study that was prepared by Raimi Kemp and associates for this project. And in your report, I outlined what the findings of that traffic study were, and most of which has been shown in the traffic improvements that Mr. Harrison just discussed, including the various turn lanes that they are proposing to install on Ashmore Bridge Road. There were a few things, as was just talked about, that were mentioned in that traffic study, but were not shown on these plans and had more to do with Ranch Road and the signalization of that intersection. As Mr. Harrison mentioned, we met with DOT yesterday to talk a little bit more about that and find out what they would require. And what they stated was similar to what just Mr. Harrison just stated, was that they found that the, the project in the county at Legacy Pines has been reduced, reducing the number of lots that they're proposing in that project down from 500 some to 200 or 300. And that has, in DOT's opinion, removed the warrant for a traffic signal at that intersection. But like Paul said, they're going to be watching that carefully and, and at any point when that triggers, they'll follow through whether they work that out with the developers or they themselves, they DOT themselves install that traffic signal, one or the other will happen. There was some questions too about is there plans for Ashmore Bridge Road? This has been included in the long-range plan for the GPATS committee that oversees traffic improve, or transportation improvements in this region. And DOT even went so far to say at the meeting yesterday that as these projects are coming online, there are areas such as this, right in front of the subdivision, where there are improvements being made to add that middle turn lane. And so you're going to see more and more sections of Ashmore Bridge Road have those middle turn lanes on them. And as that continues to move forward, what they are planning to do at the, at the right time, either the conclusion of these developments or as it's triggered by the traffic flows, to do similar what they're doing on West Georgia Road right now, where they're working on filling in the gaps and three-laning the, the whole section. So that is on their radar and something they mentioned yesterday they're anticipating doing. But in the, in the short term, they're relying on these projects to do the improvements that are in front of their, each of their respective developments. And then lastly, this did go before the Greenville County Subdivision Advisory Committee. For the most part, their comments entailed the typical comments that we usually see for these projects. A couple of things of note, Greenville Water did indicate that they will require the applicant to make improvements to the water system there. And at the time, DOT had commented, commented that the traffic study didn't quite match up to their plans from what they could see, but that's since been clarified and they have a understanding of what the project entails now and what the improvements are that will be provided in, in relation to this project. Staff reviewed this plat for the compliance, or for compliance with the city's land development regulations and the zoning ordinance. This development proposal does meet and exceed the minimum standards contained therein and, and along the lines of the exceeding, the 44% open space will really be valuable for this project. Again, helping to accommodate some of the displaced wildlife as well as just providing some buffering along that joint, this property. Staff does recommend that approval of this plat be conditional on satisfying the conditions provided by the Greenville County Subdivision Advisory Committee, variance from what's in your report, to meet the recommendations provided by the South Carolina Department of Transportation. And then finally, that no disturbance of any wetlands will occur without an appropriate permit issued by the Army Corps of Engineers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions from staff, from the commission?
Mr. Chair, just one real quick thing. Looks like you have a chat notification on there. I didn't want to, just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to ask questions.
It looked like it was a question about the traffic from the nearby subdivisions. And indication that traffic's going to be bad there.
What is the trigger for South Carolina DOT to require traffic lights, traffic signals? Anybody know?
Yeah, so, and, and I'll let Mr. Harrison fill in the gaps that I don't. But so that's the purpose of the traffic study, is to identify the traffic levels that exist now, the traffic levels that will exist in the future if there's no development that takes place. And then finally, what will be the traffic levels that will be in the future with this and other surrounding developments? And then they have different traffic counts that they look at, that they grade into different levels and they use A, B, C, D, E, and F to basically grade the acceptance of the type of traffic along that road. So they look at all those numbers and, and figures and they're engineers much smarter than I and, and come up with the determinations of when certain improvements are needed to help with the traffic counts and the flows on that road, so it still flows at an acceptable level. Did I miss anything there, Mr. Harrison? And so that's what, just if I can add more to that comment, that's what they're continuing to watch on this road. And they indicated that as recent as yesterday, maybe DOT, that they're watching those traffic counts and, and these plans that are being, or these studies that are being proposed for each of the individual projects, making sure they marry well and where there's gaps that they're aware of those.
So just so I'm clear, the Raimi Kemp analysis that indicated that signalization was going to be needed is no longer applicable, given the change in plans from the other, the neighboring subdivision?
That's correct.
But it's still a possibility as soon as DOT determines that it's necessary.
Yeah, and, and to be honest with you, for both, and we talked about this yesterday as well, for both this project and for the other project on Ranch Road, it certainly would benefit those projects. So those developers maybe, may consider talking with each other about that and to see if there's something that they might consider doing jointly.
If, if a light would be put on, who would be responsible for that? DOT or developers?
Well, DOT, from the numbers that they're getting right now, is saying that the numbers don't support a traffic signal there. If, if at this point, the developers want to put a traffic signal there and they're able to get approval from DOT, that would be at, at the developer's cost. If at a future point though, as DOT continues to watch the numbers there and see that a traffic signal is warranted, they indicated yesterday that they'll put the signal in at their cost at that point in time.
Can we urge DOT to be proactive versus reactive?
You're talking about DOT.
Mr. Deerhog, I have a question. The traffic counts will trigger the signal, but they weren't, the traffic count, would they also trigger the additional left turn lane? Oh, sorry, no, the additional northbound right turn lane as well as the second egress lane onto Ranch Road for motorists turning right on Ashmore Bridge? Would that all be included in the reconfiguration of the intersection of Ranch Road and Ashmore Bridge? Or would it simply just be installing a traffic light?
The, the additional turn lanes on Ranch Road that you're asking about were part of that signalization of that intersection. So that would be included with that signalization is to include.
Okay, so all three bullets that are shown under the section where you've outlined what the preliminary plans do not show, all of those improvements will be triggered if the traffic counts deem necessary?
Correct.
I mean, I, I just want to echo what Dean said, that it feels awful reactive rather than proactive and might create some dangerous situations at that intersection while the traffic counts continue to increase. It's frustrating to me how slow DOT moves. And I sympathize with the community with those feelings.
Yes, it would appear that this road is already strained. So we all have concerns regarding that.
Mr. Deerhog, are, are traffic circles still under consideration by the, the Department of Transportation? Or is that sort of gone by the wayside?
Yeah, they don't speak about those willingly and they have not really entertained that here.
Seems about, what, four or five years ago, that was all the rage and now we don't hear much about them anymore.
There seems to be a lot of them going in. Are those all on county roads and not state roads?
I think a lot of those are on city roads, particularly in the city of Greenville.
Okay.
Seemed to work well. I don't remember the last time I saw an accident at the intersection of Verde and whatever.
They do, they do work well.
Does anyone have any insight on the difference from a cost perspective of a traffic circle versus a signal?
I don't know the exact numbers. I know that long-term, they're cheaper just because you're not keeping up with machinery and electronics and all that good stuff. But I don't know, initially, maybe Mr. Harrison could shed some light.
Guys are saying is true. The downside to traffic circles is they require more property. So you, most of the time, you got to acquire right-of-way to put in a traffic circle because it's a much larger footprint. Traffic does flow better for traffic, you know, with the traffic circles. But they also cost about twice as much as a signal.
To build.
And a signal probably runs in the ballpark of 125,000, whereas a traffic circle at, at Ranch Road would probably cost you somewhere in the ballpark of 225 to 250. But a lot of times, it's the land, it's the right-of-way acquisition and stuff associated with that.
I think we're all concerned about the traffic situation on Ashmore Bridge. I don't exactly know just how far this discussion we can have with it because we're approving the plan for the neighborhood based on the regulations that are in place now.
Mr. Deerhog, I, I want to apologize. I thought I would make it through the first vote for this agenda item, but I do have to excuse myself from the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Almost finished. So you did provide your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Any additional discussion? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a recommendation to approve as per staff's recommendation with the conditions as stated.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Foreman with, and I'm going to repeat them just so we're clear.
Would you like me to repeat those? Because I did bury the wording on one of them.
Let me see if I can get it.
You got it.
The applicant, a motion to approve the preliminary plat with the following conditions. The applicant shall satisfy the conditions provided by the Greenville County Subdivision Advisory Committee. The applicant shall meet the recommendations of SC DOT regarding the traffic. And any disturbance of the wetlands without appropriate permit issued by the Army Corps of Engineers shall not be permitted. Do I hear a second?
A second.
I have a second by Commissioner Ong. Any last-minute discussion? Here on one, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. And since we're all here now, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. Aye. All opposed, please indicate by saying nay. I believe that was unanimous. Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is review of thrift and consignment stores and ordinance, and the related ordinance. As before, we're going to begin with an introduction from staff. Thanks for coming. Following staff's introduction, I'll ask if any members of the commission need to disclose any conflicts of interest regarding this item. After that, since this isn't like the last one, we won't have an applicant comment. So we will open the Florida public comment, however. As before, everyone who would like to comment can approach the lecturn when their name is called and they'll have three minutes to speak. After everyone who wants to speak had their turn, we'll close the Florida public comment and hear the recommendation of staff. Mr. Deerhog, will you please introduce this item?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to give the little background on this. Back in July, the Malden City Council approved a resolution requesting the planning commission to consider amending the zone, zoning ordinance to limit the number of thrift stores allowed in the city's commercial districts and to conduct a public hearing. One of the findings in the resolution that they passed is that additional thrift stores in the city of Malden may be inconsistent with the objectives of the zoning ordinance to predict the quality and appearance of the property, properties in commercial zoning districts. Currently, thrift stores and consignment stores are included in the general category of retail sales as provided in the Malden zoning ordinance. As such, they are allowed in the C1, C2, CRD, and S1 districts. There are presently no special There are presently no specialty use standards for thrift stores and consignment stores outside of the general standards for parking, landscaping, signs, building design, and other general district standards. Presently, staff has knowledge of six thrift or consignment stores in the city of Malden. And the stars on the map on the display show where these are located. These include Miracle Hill Thrift Store on Butler, West Butler Road, Kids &amp; More Consignment on New Neely Ferry Road, Déjà Vu on North Main Street, Rainbow Paints and Home Decor on East Butler Road, The Dress at East Butler, on East Butler Road, and Blue and Gold McCaw on Woodruff Road. And if you'll note that the Salvation Army Family Store on South Main Street has permanently closed. Staff researched for and reviewed a handful of communities across the nation that provided special regulations or standards for thrift stores and consignment stores. In South Carolina, staff only identified one community with special standards. That was the city of Florence. But we did refine and research other communities in Minnesota, Illinois, California, North Carolina, Alabama, Kansas, and Florida. Hello, or I'll share some of the findings that I found from those communities. Some of them, uh, some of these communities have found that thrift and secondhand goods stores operate in a manner that is not directly compatible with typical commercial establishments. Specifically, these communities find that the receipt of used goods, the processing of used goods, the warehousing and distribution of goods, disposal or recycling of non-salable goods and materials is closer to industrial and waste-related land use characteristics and traditional, traditional retail characteristics. Some communities have expressed concerns that the operation of motorists waiting in line to donate items can have adverse effects on traffic circulation and congestion. City of Albertville in Minnesota was once such example. Some communities found that thrift and secondhand goods stores can have an adverse impact on the appearance of the community. It's primarily, this is primarily attributed to donations left outside, unsightly donation boxes, and other outdoor storage and display of merchandise. And some of these communities express concerns that this adversely affects the city's ability to attract and retain businesses and shoppers. Example of these communities are Escondido in California, Madison in Alabama, and San Clemente in California. Some communities found that thrift and secondhand goods stores definitions generally encompass a broad variety of business, including antique shops, consignment shops, pawn shops, collectibles, special, specialty thrift stores, and general merchandise secondhand stores. And so they, uh, some of those communities include definitions for various types. But for the most part, most of them define, their definitions include both for-profit and nonprofit establishments and don't distinguish between, uh, between them. Again, Albertville in Minnesota is an example of that. Lastly, some communities have found that thrift and secondhand goods stores are growing on a national scale, both in number and, and in popularity. Prior to COVID nineteen, this industry was growing at an annual rate of seven percent. At least that's according to one study done by a community. Additionally, the appeal of thrift store shopping is growing beyond low-income households to include middle and upper-income households. Thrift store shopping has also increased in popularity with younger shoppers who not only find the lower prices to be sensible, but are also attracted to the uniqueness and the quality of the items sold. And again, Albertville is, is an example of a community that made such findings. In your report, I included the different types of regulations that other communities employ. And I'm not going to go through all of those, but except to basically say that the draft ordinance that is before you tonight is based on those various types of regulations and standards that are employed by here in the draft ordinance for consideration tonight. Let me go ahead and give a summary of the ordinance, and then you'll be able to hold the public hearing for this. So the ordinance, first of all, defines and categorizes consignment stores and thrift stores separately from antique shops and consignment boutique shops. I'll note that a consignment boutique shop is defined as a consignment store that is engaged in the sale of primarily only one type of used merchandise, such as children's apparel, just like Kids &amp; More provides, furniture, which is what Rainbow Paints and Home Decor provides, women's clothing and fashion. Examples of that are Déjà Vu and Blue and Gold McCaw, or sporting goods. An example of that is played against sports. Consignment stores and thrift stores are permitted by right in the S, in this, in this draft ordinance, they're permitted by right in the S one Trades and Commercial Services District and conditionally allowed in the C two General Commercial District, subject to specific use standards. And I'll touch on those in a moment, in a minute. Antique shops and consignment boutique shops are included as retail sales, which are permitted by right in the C one, C two, C R D, and S one districts, similar to how they are treated right now. The conditional use standards for thrift stores and consis, consignment stores in the C two district include the following. Separation from residences where they're not closer than two hundred feet from any residential use in a residential zoning district. The store needs, uh, must be located in a multi-tenant shopping center or similar center that is separately occupied by at least two other non-thrift and non-consignment stores. Next, the outdoor receipt processing or storage of used goods or donations is strictly prohibited. The receipt of goods, processing of goods and disposable, disposal of unusable and non-salable goods must be entirely conducted within a completely enclosed principal structure or at a service bay located at the rear of the store that's entirely screened from any adjacent street or other property. Outdoor donation bins, collection boxes, tractor trailers, shipping containers or similar containers used for collection, storage, or processing shall be prohibited. Next, the outdoor display and/or sale of merchandise is strictly prohibited. Next, an appointment or set hours must be in place for the exception, for the acceptance of consigned or donated goods. Next, sufficient directional signage shall be provided that directs the public about when and where to take consigned or donated goods. And signage must be provided that expressly states that dropping off and leaving goods after business hours is prohibited. Loading and unloading areas, including vehicle stacking or queuing areas for consigned and donated goods shall not obstruct any parking areas or other traffic circulation on the site or on any adjacent streets. The view into ground floor windows and doors shall not be obscured or blocked. The use of bars, chains, rolled down shutters, and similar security devices visible from a public street or sidewalk or adjacent property are prohibited. And lastly, the property shall be maintained free of trash and debris at all times. Store management shall be responsible for the immediate removal of litter that spills over onto adjacent properties and streets. Again, these are, represent standards that were common to some of the communities that were studied as, um, part of this overall study. That's an introduction and an overview, if you will, of the ordinance that is now for public hearing.
Thank you. Before I open the Florida public comment, do any members of the commission have a conflict of interest regarding this item? Hearing nine. I'm going to open the Florida public comments. If you'd like, I'll go ahead and read the names off my list. When I do, please approach the lecturn and provide your thoughts on this, and you'll have three minutes. Monroe Free?
Evening, I'm Monroe Free. I'm the president of, CEO of Habitat for Humanity Greenville County. And while we agree with much of what's in the resolution from the council, there's one particular piece which we would be asking you to remove, and that is the two-hundred-foot restriction from residential areas. But I'm here to talk more about why and tell you why this is important, not just to Malden, but to the greater Greenville community when we face a affordable housing crisis in our community. And I applaud Malden for having two current developments going for affordable housing. But, um, there's much more than that to be done across our county to meet this fundamental need. Habitat Humanities' mission is to build homes, community, and hope. We do build homes. We'll soon hit four hundred homes here in Greenville County by Habitat. We also repair homes. We do forty to fifty repair projects, weatherization projects on homes every year, too. So we build homes. People don't think about us building communities, but we do. And we do that in a variety of ways. We go and, and approach the community and help them develop goals and, um, help them achieve those goals in, in, in their community. But other ways, we improve housing values in the communities where we build. We improve health outcomes for families. Our families tell us that sixty, sixty-eight percent of our families tell us their kids' grades improve. So education, academic achievement improves because of what Habitat does. So we build community, and then finally, we build hope for a family who is paying upwards of fifty percent, many of them over fifty percent of their income on housing. We guarantee in our homes that a family will pay less than thirty percent of their income. That means they can afford medicine for their kids. That means they can afford extracurriculars for their kids. It means they build equity in their home so they have wealth to pass on through their family. It is a fundamental game changer, uh, for families through affordable homeownership. I think that thrift stores are, uh, restore hugely important to us. A third of our income, roughly two and a half million dollars this year, will come from our restores. And we're going to give you some other reasons to support us, but I want you to know that it, it, it really boils down to mission. And what you have here is an opportunity to do something to make our community better, to make the lives of families better, and I would encourage it.
Mr. Free, would you mind elaborating just briefly on the two-hundred-foot restriction? I know we're minutes out, but I'll give you another few seconds. You mentioned you didn't like the two-hundred-foot restriction.
That's correct.
Is there any way you can sum that up in thirty seconds?
I think it, what it essentially does, and I, uh, for whatever reason, I, I think it, it essentially limits any thrift stores in Malden. And you're going to end up with one thrift store that's already here that gets grandfathered in. That seems, first of all, fundamentally unfair to the nonprofit community. And I think limits possibilities of development in their, in, in Malden. So that's, uh, that's the issue.
Thank you. Murray Steenbeck? Mark, my apologies.
My name is Mark Steenbeck, and I'm the Chief Resource Officer for Habitat Greenville. Ultimately, I'm responsible for all the restore operations here in Greenville County. And I have over twelve years' experience in running and opening thrift stores here in the upstate. I'm also a resident of the city of Malden. Having worked in the area of thrift retail for over a decade now, I can tell you that I have seen the good and the bad of what thrift stores can do for their community and the organizations they support. I have learned what it takes to operate stores that is both a benefit to the community through the offering, offering of quality goods, both new and used at affordable prices, as well as being a positive reflection of the organization within the community. As you can see by the handouts provided, our stores are set up in a clean and professional way. Our signage is always appropriate and branded well. Our buildings are maintained and inviting both externally and internally. We have not and will not use donation boxes as they become eyesores for the community, poorly protect the donated items, and typically become collection points for trash. We store and process all donations internally. We provide convenient and covered donation drop-offs that are clean and separate from the customer entrances, making donations easy and organized. We only choose locations with loading docks so that our trucks unload directly into our locations. We also supply forklifts and material handling equipment, thus eliminating the need for a drag-and-drop of materials outside our facility. While supporting the mission of Habitat, we also provide the community with a constant supply of gently-used and new household items, construction materials, tools, appliances, fixtures, flooring, and much more. Last fiscal year, we saw an average of six hundred and sixteen customers a day at our Wade Hampton location and another two hundred and eighty-three a day at our Woodruff Road location. As you can see, our locations are relied on by the surrounding community to find what they need for their homes conveniently and affordably. In the last year, we have also provided a convenient way for a hundred and, over a hundred and twenty of the citizens of Malden to repurpose their unwanted but still useful items while supporting Habitat's work. On a weekly basis, our free donation pickup, um, services make about a hundred pickups a week without, throughout Greenville County. And local residents around our stores average about three hundred and ninety-one drop-offs a week. In the last fiscal year alone, we were able to divert three, over three million pounds of waste from landfills, providing a much more community and environmentally friendly option for residents to get rid of unwanted but still useful items. We understand that for any new business in this community to be an added value, there is a need for them to integrate into and become part of the community. For the most part, the ordinance you are considering this evening reflects that. We would simply ask that the provision that reflects, that restricts any thrift store within two hundred feet of residential property line be removed. Coupling that with the requirement to be in a shopping center with other non-thrift businesses effectively bans any other thrift store from being a part of the Malden community. As part of the leadership of a nonprofit and a citizen of the city of Malden, I don't believe that it is beneficial for either the city or the nonprofit to restrict thrift stores from being a part of Malden community. Thank you.
Mark, real quick, what was the number of customers you said were at a Woodruff?
Two hundred and eighty-six a day.
Thank you. Kimberly Long?
I'm here representing the owner of Butler Square Shopping Center, which is where the Habitat is looking to space there. And I'm here to touch base on reasons why I think, or we all think that Malden and the center itself to allow Habitat for Humanity to occupy the space. We, that space was recently vacated by, excuse me, by Bilo. We don't have any other grocery stores in line to take that space. The market is too saturated for another grocery store to go into that center. We've tried to get multiple grocery stores there. They are not interested in the space due to the concentrated, concentrated market. Too much competition. So right now, uh, that center is no longer, or that space is no longer even deemed to be suitable for grocery store. And Habitat for Humanity would be a viable tenant there. They would be a long-term tenant, credit tenant for us. We manage, we own and manage, actually, we have properties ranging all the way from Pennsylvania down to Florida, all along the east coast. And Habitat would be a viable tenant for us. It would bring a lot to the center, um, we believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next name on the list, I can't read the last name, but the first name is John. Well, there's a Randall as well. Why don't you go ahead and come on up, tell us your name, and provide your comments? Thank you. We'll get everybody.
Guys, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm gonna, I do represent Habitat for Humanity.
Could you please state your name and your address?
Daniel Bentley, 106 Latour Way, Greer, South Carolina. So I wanted, I do represent them. I don't only represent them, but I'm a supporter of theirs. And I've seen the work that they do when I get to go to their annual meetings, and I see the families that they've touched. And so this is a broader picture, and I want to talk to you a little bit, because I've sat in the chair you sat in, you sit in. I was chairman of the Planning Commission for Greenville County for three years, served for six, and I know how much pay you get. So I want to talk to you, just, I want to touch on some of the ordinances here for just a minute, some of the pieces. The first thing that this tells me is that they've asked, the county councils ask, city councils ask you to consider amendment. Consider does not mean it needs to be done. Second thing, and I think the purpose that you need to talk about is what is really driving this? What is it that the city of Malden is concerned about, seriously concerned about? Because there's a lot of other things that we need to be addressing besides something this simple. The second thing is the popularity issue. Popularity, a study, 2000, a recent study done in 20, basically said that from 2019 to 2024, that thrift stores would be growing at around 4% a year. And I understand there's other studies, I may say different things, but this is a recent study I found this morning. Secondly, in the whereas part, it talks about processing goods, warehousing, distribution is similar to warehousing land uses. This is a retail activity. It is retail activity because you go there, I go there, and by the way, 16% to 18% of the population goes to these stores. Another study that was completed last year, 16% to 18% of your constituents and your citizens go to these stores. A point's already been made about one of the benefits, and that is that a lot of material that comes here would normally go to the landfill. And it's, and there are multiple studies that back up that case. So I think we need to be careful in this ordinance or this proposed text amendment that simply speaks, that qualifies this. Every retailer has a warehousing component, be it Lowe's, be it Publix, be it anyone that you want to pick. They all have a warehousing component to them. They all have trash. They all have tractor trailers. Most of your retail centers are close to residential, because we won't. We, the public, want convenience, don't we? So we need to think about 200 feet. Where does that come from? In fact, even our industrial zoning does not require but 50 feet. So there's an issue there that needs to be seriously considered. There's two other things about this. One is it fits, there's components in here that hit a very broad brush, and we need to be careful probably about exactly what that's intending to do, because words can say things and can be interpreted, and that's where you have fun with lawyers. The second thing that I would say is, who is it really hurting? How many complaints has the city had compared to other complaints they've had? Particularly your police department, they'll know exactly what that is. So I would challenge you to do a little research along that line. And then the other thing I would simply say would be, there are also pieces of this that are hitting a specific business, and so I would just challenge you to think about where this lines up in a couple of things. There are very broad brushes. Are you intending for that to hit one business when other businesses are just experiencing the same kinds of things? If you don't understand and believe that, right around the back of any grocery store, right around the back of Publix, right around the back of Lowe's.
Mr. Bentley, could you please aim for a finish here?
So I will share the last piece of wisdom that does not come from me, but comes from my wife. Not every good, not every idea needs to be acted on. And this one needs to be a lot of work done before you implement it the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment?
Taylor Martin, live at 20 Trailstream Drive in Malden.
Can you say that one more time?
Taylor Martin, 20 Trailstream Drive in Malden. I also co-represent with Randall Habitat for Humanity. I just wanted to point out a couple key things that I felt may have gotten missed in the last four presentations. I actually reached out to Wheeler about bringing Habitat there back in June of last year. This was even before BiLo was vacating the property. There were just kind of some rumors that it was happening, and I tried to reach out and see what the status of that was. At that time, they were already conversing with grocers and trying to see if they could backfill that space with a grocery store. And I continued that conversation for the next four to five months, and they had no success with that. Finally, when BiLo vacated in April, I reconvened that conversation and tried to see where things were at, and again, they confirmed that, you know, they had literally scraped the bottom of the barrel. They've talked to every grocer they could imagine, and none of them were eligible candidates to go in there. So if that was the concern, that's what they were trying, if that's what Malden's trying to accomplish by putting this in place, that's not going to happen. There's not going to be a grocer going in there in the foreseeable future. In addition, the 200-foot rule specifically for the property we're talking about at West Butler, where BiLo was previously, the property directly behind, I'm not sure what the road is, but behind the BiLo is zone residential, and that would be the problematic parcel for this specific property. Randall touched on, you can go around the back of any grocer operation, you can look at the warehouse management, the trash, the collection that's going back there. If you look at the operation that Habitat runs, you're going to have donation drop-off right through the pharmacy window that will be modified specifically to house that donation area. It will be just as clean as the pharmacy line running through there. It will be as clean, if not cleaner, than a grocer operating there. So just those kinds of points, it does seem very targeted, it does seem very targeted to eliminate the opportunity for thrift stores to have success in the market. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Ryan, 305 Butler Road. I'm sitting in your seat in a little different position. I think, let me, I got a little insight as to what I hope the city is trying to accomplish here, and probability of cleaning up some thrift stores. I know we had one on Main Street that I think probably we all glad that it's not there. And so what I think is that we meet already all of the definitions below out of number two. We already comply with those. As a matter of fact, we agree with no, having no outside collection boxes, and what that brings. But we've been looking at this site now for probably ever since BiLo vacated. And obviously, we know, by the way, I forgot to tell you, but my full-time job, I serve as Vice President of Finance for Habitat for Humanity. So I've been there for six years. I saw somebody looking like, is he talking? But anyway, we know, we know that this would be good for the city of Malden. Looking at the site, we know that that intersection right there is the second busiest in Greenville County, okay? And we know that the proceeds from this one location probably build at least three to four times a year for people who really need it. We really would appreciate, appreciate what you do, you say that. It's not an easy job, but certainly appreciate your consideration of allowing us to come into the city of Malden. And again, with the 200-foot buffer, there's no way, there's no place that we can come to the city of Malden. Appreciate your consideration for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, I didn't come here to talk about this, but I will. Norman Bund, 221 Yorkswell Lane, former president of the Braymore HOA, by the way, and current president of the Malden Rotary Club. I live in one of those houses you were talking about earlier that is on the upper end of Ashmore Bridge, more expensive than the ones you plan to put in. Light fixtures in my house came from Habitat for Humanity Restore. They were returned there by people who didn't like the metal iron ones, and they didn't like them anymore, so they put the nice chrome ones and the ones that collect sputnik in their house. And I got these very nice, very ornate iron fixtures that are all over my house. Entire basement area that I just finished refinishing is floored with luxury vinyl plank flooring that came from Habitat for Humanity Restore. So I'm a consumer of this, and I enjoy going to their stores. Yeah, there's some stuff in there that I wouldn't touch, I'll be honest with you. There's a lot of nice things as well, and it meets a specific need that we have. We're also moving as a nation into, you know, the more sustainable, the less throwaway type of community, and Restor meets that kind of need. Things don't end up in the landfill. They don't end up on the side of the road. They don't end at the end of your subdivision where there hasn't been a house built yet, but somebody backed a pickup truck and dumped their old stuff into it because they couldn't find another place to put it. We've all seen that. So I think, and I haven't read this ordinance, I wasn't aware of the ordinance before I came tonight, but I want to speak as a consumer and a person in the area who uses the products that they sell and who frequents their stores and has seen the quality, improving quality of the Restores in our area. Early on, they were not all that great, but as they have gone and gotten bigger and better, moving into several old BiLo locations, they have dramatically improved their quality. So I don't know about the ordinance. I'm surprised at 200 feet from where, I'm not sure, it's like a property line, but behind the BiLo, there's an extremely large retention pond-type area that probably is a good 50 or 60 feet wide. So if it's from the property line versus the back of the building, then yeah, you're going to run into something pretty easy, that kind of restriction. So I just want to make a comment as a consumer and let you know that I would love to see a Restor in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Thanks. I'm going to close the floor to public comments at this time. Now's a good time for the commission to discuss or provide any questions to staff.
One question, the 200 feet, is that off the property line or is that off of any residential building?
In this ordinance, it's measured lot line to lot line. Change whatever you want. So, you know, let me back up, and if you're asking, well, where did we come up with that? That was just an example taken from one of these communities that were studied.
Olaf, Minnesota?
Olaf, Kansas, was it Minnesota?
Kansas, excuse me.
Kansas. So that was taken from that community. There were some other communities that actually had separation requirements, that new thrift stores had to be separated from existing thrift stores. I saw that in Columbia Heights, Florence, Olaf, and Redondo Beach, but that was not included in this draft ordinance instead of use that separation from residential uses. But so, yeah, if you, there's a few different ways that you could adjust that. It could be measured from the front door. It could be measured from the facility. Whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind the restriction and stuff like that. It's just like, can we just, I just want to speak frankly here, everybody? We just, like, what are you guys' thoughts about putting a special exception clause in here?
I would, my thought would be, you know, obviously, it's the back of that building is what faces those homes on Wotley. Obviously, you know, the concern is that they can't meet the 200-foot buffer. You know, I'm not opposed to requiring some sort of exception that with, in this case, where others, that some sort of screening is required, you know, preferably, you know, something like a line of Leyland cypresses that are going to provide a nice natural screening to, you know, add some beautification, but also, you know. So, and I think the concern maybe is from, you know, with the residents, is there, you know, you look at, you drive behind certain thrift stores, and there's just piles of donated goods everywhere, and homeowners don't want to look out their door and see that, and I get that and I understand that. So, I mean, you know, I don't know what we could do as far as additional requirements if, you know, the exception is, you know, because we can't meet the 200, what can we, what can be required in lieu of that in order to make something work for the community?
So, Mr. Deerhug, the 200 feet would only be required as a condition under the C2? Is that correct? It would be allowed outright in the S1?
Yeah, that's correct. It says how this ordinance is drafted.
So the, you really don't, you don't need, I mean, it doesn't have to be less than 200, it doesn't have to be, we don't have to have anything. I mean, this is, this is just the draft version, if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Deerhug.
So are there currently, I think I heard someone say this, are there currently anybody that will be grandfathered in that's a thrift store currently?
Yeah, Miracle Hill.
So just, just again, just to hammer this point on the 200 feet, that's just an arbitrary number that we found in Olaf, Kansas, correct?
It was a number taken from Olaf, and it supported the, one of the general findings about how, I think I understand that the reason that communities have looked into that is because they attribute this type of use to something akin to like warehousing and industrial type. Thank you. At least as far as I could figure, trying to understand and study their ordinance.
Just so I'm clear, there aren't any thrift or consignment stores in the plaza with the old BiLo, correct?
No, sir.
I can see it on the map here, but I thought I heard a comment to that, to that effect during the public speaking period.
Yeah, let me clarify if I didn't make this point clear earlier. What we just said was, under the definition of this ordinance, as it pertains to thrift and consignment stores, there's only one business in the city that currently meets that definition, and that's the Miracle Hill thrift store. The other five stores that are shown on here would fall under the category of a consignment boutique shop.
Just to answer Brian's question about the, or at least dig into that a little bit more, the landscaping or the buffer requirements, that any non-residential use that buffers the residential use is going to be subject to certain buffering requirements as is, correct? So we could theoretically, as part of this request, beef up the buffering requirements for thrift stores as an example?
Yes.
Pardon? I'm sorry, could you?
I'd rather, I'd rather see something in that store versus sitting empty at BiLo. I mean, I'm, if there's some kind of exception that we can write in there where an applicant can apply for, you know, something like that, I don't know.
I also don't see any difference between this and a Lowe's or Home Depot, right? So that's where I kind of fall in line, like, while it maybe categorizes a thrift store because of our arbitrary, I'm not going to say arbitrary, but because of our definition. If we can, if we can allow ourselves at a later date to be
If we can, if we can allow ourselves at a later date to be able to, to make exceptions, I think that will benefit the public in general, right? Because this is going to be a rule that, that impacts any number of stores in the future. And Malden's only going to get bigger, so we got to welcome business in general. Sorry, there was, there was a hand being raised. Can we?
Dennis.
Welcome to class.
Let me restate that, Mr. Chairman, just so those on the audio can, or on the virtual meeting can hear. So a comment was made from the chambers that Habitat Restored applied for a business license after the resolution was adopted by the city council. And so this is being shared as perhaps a possibility for this body to consider if it might be something they work in as an exception, making an exception for their application.
So we would, in considering this draft ordinance, allow for an exception for that, for this particular organization?
I think that's the suggestion that we just heard in the, in the audience.
Mr. Deerhog, just so I'm clear, the, the Habitat for Humanity of Greenville County requested a, a permit from the city and was denied based upon the current ordinance?
The, they applied for a business license and, and have been denied on the, at the recommendation of our attorney due to pending ordinance doctrine.
Is this that pending doctrine?
I think the attorney is suggesting that because the city council has taken action to ask the planning commission to study and consider and hold a public hearing for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, that that's a form of pending doctrine or pending ordinance.
If, so if this ordinance does not get adopted as it's written here today, and I know that's, we're probably asking for a lot of conjecture on your part, so I understand if you don't feel comfortable answering it. But if this ordinance is not adopted, would they then be able to come back and reapply under the existing ordinance?
Sounds like a lawyer question. And I think the expectation that has been passed by the city council is that you'll make some form of report on this to them, even if it's consideration of no ordinance at this time, that that would be reported to them accordingly.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're making, we're a body just making a recommendation to council.
I think I would, I think I would ask that we would move, like, we would add the exception. I think a policy exception would be necessary. I don't see, I am a little apprehensive about the 200 feet personally. I feel like that's pretty arbitrary, right? Like, you know, Kansas is Kansas, Malden is Malden, right? So I think that that would need to be revisited. I think that an exception needs to be, needs to be added. If we can do that, pass those recommendations on, I think, I think that's what I would do.
My only question to that is if we're making the exception, then why, why are we even changing the rules?
No, I mean, that's, that's also, that's also a fair, fair one. That gives us, I guess that would give, give the council and us at a later date the ability to make decisions on.
Based on the client.
Based on the clientele, right, yes.
Customer.
Yeah, so I mean, it gives you that, it gives you a little bit of leverage. You know, you could say yes or say no, and, you know, if the council ends up with a habit of saying no, it's a habit of saying no.
So the sticking point here is the 200 feet, right? Everything else, all the other line items, we all seem to think are pretty good ideas?
Yeah, I think so. Is there a, what does Lowe, what do we, what would we require from Lowe's or Home Depot? What would we require from, I mean, any other business, a grocer, right? So like, that's kind of my thing, is that the majority of these businesses that we're talking about are going to be small, smaller in nature, potentially private enterprises. And we're kind of saying, if you can't afford to set up somewhere else, don't set up here. So that's kind of where I start falling in the realm of things.
I like, I like having an ordinance that, you know, that controls outdoor collection and storage and all that stuff. That's all, all good stuff. So, I mean, I think ordinance is, is needed. I'm not sure if all of it, like I said, I'd like to write in some kind of an exception or something, or, you know, something made for that 200 feet, you know, where it could be an exception or applicants can apply for an exception for that 200 feet. It's pretty arbitrary.
Or do we amend?
Take it off.
Yeah, or do we amend and specify that that 200 feet is structure to structure and not lot line to lot line?
Yeah. It could be too.
Right, so you could do structure to structure, and then you could potentially even say that, that distance can be reduced with landscaping, like beautification. For instance, the Leland Cypress.
Screening, yeah.
I would, I would suggest something along those lines, more than I would say, just do away with the 200 feet. But also kind of leaning in the direction of just scratching.
Kind of with you. I think the 200 feet seems to be the major sticking point. And if we're going to change the number, we don't, we don't have a study to back up what number we're going to change it to.
And like you said, it's a pretty arbitrary number.
Right.
I guess, I don't even know if we have one for industrial, the one in industrial zone?
No, I think earlier during the public hearing, we heard one of the commentators that the, the industrial requirement is 50 feet, and I think it's a 50-foot, like, screen or buffer or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So this probably refers to the setback requirements. There's also typically for the industrial, a transitional buffer that's required. And in most cases, if it's next to residential, it would be a 30-foot buffer.
30 foot, 75 feet something. I don't know, I'm, I'm okay with doing 200 feet. And then if we do that, then Habitat technically meets, correct? Is that what we're saying?
Right, I mean, I would, I would say that Habitat for sure, but I also would stress that what we're talking about is not just trying to make sure that Habitat for Humanity is set up for success. We also want to make sure that future businesses are set up.
That's true.
Right, so, so we don't want to just set, set them up. I think, so I think that it does need to be looked at potentially a little more deeply. So just looking at the conditions on page four, right? A, separation for residences, I think we all can agree that we don't, the, the point, the 200 feet. And then B, the multi-tenant shopping center, we're, we're forcing restores, not just restores, sorry, but thrift stores into multi-tenant shopping centers and only multi-tenant shopping centers. I think that could potentially be more aesthetically displeasing in the future than, than not, but that's just me. So, you know, it may be worth saying no and going back and taking, and having it, it's really looked at again. That's just. Outside of that, I think the intent behind it is solid, right? It makes, it makes sense. We're trying to make sure that the town still looks good. I think we just need to be sure that, that we're facilitating private enterprise and making sure the town.
Yeah. David, is council looking for us to have a ordinance? An ordinance recommended to them?
I believe so.
After this meeting? Tonight?
I was going to say. I don't know the answer, the timing of which, but yes, I think that's, their interest is to have some semblance of an ordinance to come their way.
I'm sure the, the folks from Habitat would like to have that answer sooner than, than later as well.
So that means we got to go through each of these line items, what, seven of them? Nine of them? And see which ones we want to put into the ordinance or recommendation to council, how you guys see it?
Yeah, I mean, the, so I, I think to, to answer your question, Dean, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Deerhog, the, I think the easy thing, easiest thing to do is, is we could recommend that the ordinance be accepted as written with the, with line item two A, stricken from the, stricken from the request. That way, it still moves forward to council. It has all these other recommenda, or requirements, not by right, but by condition in a C2 ordinance, correct? Because I think even if we don't make a motion on it tonight, or if we don't make a recommendation tonight, council is going to either vote on something that we, they're probably going to vote on what we see here, regardless of what we say tonight. So our best, I think our best opportunity to provide input is tonight's meeting.
What you've just outlined is probably the easiest approach to take.
So you said accept it, except for cross off what, you said?
Just line item two A, which is the separation from residence. Scratch, scratch it all together and, or throwing it out there as, as a potential option.
And in the ordinance, that would be under section three.
Section three, yeah.
Section 10.37, item one.
Yeah, I was looking at page four on the.
You're looking at.
That's, that's my fault. I steered everybody the wrong way.
My fault, yeah.
That sounds really good. One additional question. So the store shall be located within a multi-tenant shopping center or similar center?
Usually, a similar center would be something else that has grouped various retail units. Sometimes they're all connected in the same building, and sometimes they might be little pods or something.
In the same parking lot?
Yeah.
I like Commissioner Forman's idea. I can't make a motion, but it sounds very straightforward. Sounds like a solid recommendation.
Are you okay with the multi-tenant shopping center idea? I'm not sure if I'm sold on that.
We.
Yeah, I mean, I, I so we definitely know, one is, is out. I think, two, I think when we're talking now, and thank you for the elaboration, because, okay, you got a shopping center with, with a few different stores in it, and they're all joined together, got it, you know, strip mall. But when you're talking about a facility where you may have three or four different stores, all separated, but using the same parking lot, you know, we're splitting hairs at that point.
Right.
So, you know, I, you know, I do get hung up on that personally.
There's an anchor store with, without parcels count. Talking about splitting hairs.
What about that, that shopping center that's right in the corner of, what is it, used to be that Samsung in there right now? There's a Bloom at one time?
There's a Bloom, yeah.
Standalone shopping, right? What if that turned, would that be considered a shopping center? No, right?
According to what's written here.
That, that could, I could see that housing a consignment store, right? It's got all the same things as the bylaw does, right? So then that wouldn't be able to do it because of that ordinance. Got it. I mean, I don't know if that line, that's too much.
It's too open.
It's limiting the, that business owner or certain.
There's a lot of room for interpretation, right? So, and the interpretation will fall on the city, right? This guy right over here. Yeah, so, you know, while we can give him as much information as we can think of right now, I think at the same time, it's got to be pretty clear, right? Draw the lines.
And that requirement, just for some background, was taken from Florence. They have a requirement there that they have to be in a shopping center and thrift stores have to be separated from one another.
We don't have that separation here. We do for dollar stores. See the, you see the dollar generally opened up right there?
We do for dollar stores and we also do for check cashing and those types of stuff.
Well, we could always strike number two as well, and then if, if, you know, council sees fit to put it back, then that's, that's on them.
I think, I think we could, I think we at least do that, right? If, if we've convinced, if we've done a good job of convincing everybody here that that's what we want to do, it's the city council's ultimate decision, check, but at least, at least there's another body that has said, we recommend you looking at it again.
That's right.
Striking one and two.
So just so I'm clear, what we're discussing is the draft ordinance as written with, without items A or B included.
Items one and two under section 37.
Two, each five or six.
You want to take a shot?
All right, so I'll give it a, give it a shot, maybe?
Go for it.
So make a motion to approve the draft ordinance with condition of striking under section 1037, lines one and two. Recommendation to council, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bearfoot has made a motion to recommend to council that we adopt the draft ordinance as written with the exception of, and striking from the amendment, items one and two from section 1037. Is that correct? Did I, did I get all the details of that correct?
Sound, sounded good.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It was unanimous.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Any other business? Thank you, everyone. Before I adjourn formally, any other business?
Sir.
I already have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.